...
I have a motion.
Members of council, since Chairman Zajak is not present tonight, the council, according to the charter and Robert's rules, needs to elect a chairman pro tem, which is a fancy word for temporary chairman, to preside over tonight's meeting. Are there any motions to nominate a chairman pro tem?
Any motions about me that the council can't take by the chairman pro tem?
Is... We have a motion in a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Councilmember...
And council chairperson Zajak is absent today.
Pledge led by House...
You didn't call the roll.
You called the roll.
Well, I kind of figured that was the roll, but we'll do it again. Call the roll.
Councilmember Bax.
Here.
Councilmember Colley.
Here.
Councilmember Miles.
Yep, here.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Here.
And council chairperson Zajak is absent today. Thank you.
Prayer and pledge led by councilmember Bax.
Oh God, the Father of us all, we humbly beseech thee in thy wisdom and knowledge to guide and direct the deliberation of this council along the path of truth, justice, and righteousness, so that what it decides for the welfare of our citizens may also redound to thy greater honor and glory. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, so speakers on the agenda item.
Do we have a presentation today?
Yes.
Okay.
There is a very special citizen in the audience, and our city clerk, Elizabeth Eaton, is going to be reading a resolution in her honor. There will be no vote at this particular moment on the resolution. It is simply to acknowledge and honor a very important citizen of the city of Niagara Falls. And with that, I'll turn the floor over to our city clerk.
Thank you. Relative to honoring Eliza Mae Pagler Laster. Laster, is she here?
She's not here.
She's on her way out. Okay. Very important thing that we are going to wait for. Um, so I guess with that being said, we want to... Want to move forward. All right, so we do want to wait for her to actually hear her resolution be read. Is that... Okay.
Come back to presentation. Is that... Let's do that.
All right, very good.
Speakers on the agenda item.
Thank you. So I have Gerald Skirlin. Did I pronounce your name correctly, Gerald? Tell me what it is when you get to the podium, please. I want to say it correctly. You're welcome.
Hi. I'm Gerald Skirlin. And I live at the Lavinia Porter House in Niagara Falls, New York, Buffalo Avenue. And I come here to speak on Agenda Item 9. Now, this is Congressman, or that is Congressman Higgins, who plays a very, very important role in society. And I'm glad that Mr. Tompkins has come out to promote him and honor him in this way. There's one thing that I would like to say. I'm not here criticizing him in any way, but it's perhaps more related to our Democrat Party. How that Congressman Higgins, Congressman Higgins voted against giving children in schools whole milk. Two hundred Democrats refrained or voted against giving kids whole milk, and the hundreds of Democrats sided with the Republicans, and the kids got whole milk. And I think that's great, because when you're a kid and you don't get milk so often, whole milk, man, that's just like, put a little butter in it, or some cinnamon, you know, heat it up, put some chocolate in it, man, you're really living good. That's fantastic. Yeah, but, you know, he voted against it. Now, I think that we have to look at the political aspect of that, too, because why so many in one party voted against something that another party was promoting? But anyway, I'm glad that you have brought this initiative up. Thank you. Happy retirement.
Next meeting? Oh, okay. Awesome. Many community happenings.
August 18th. So I'm... A little early, huh?
Well, and then August 25th, the OG have their, are showing the city market as well.
Awesome. So we're going to review the agenda items. More community happenings.
Do we have to do anything for the class to move it?
Walk on into the... We will. Is this class here?
I think she didn't say anything. Anything that she...
Now, we can do the basin. It's a wrap. The basin. Is she here? So is she in the mood? With respect to reviewing the agenda items, I did want to alert the council that there is an, there is an add-on item, a proposed add-on item to be Agenda Item Number 10. And that is, that is the resolution relative to honoring Eliza Mae Pagler Laster. And I do have copies of that resolution for all the council members and administrators.
Councilmember Bax.
Yes.
Councilmember Colley.
Yes.
Councilmember Miles.
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins.
Yes.
And it has, I'm sorry, this item has been added to the, has been added to the agenda. And that is going to be item number 10. Okay. So now... Yes. Yes, sir.
Awesome. So let's review of the agenda items.
Excuse me, you all, there's a buzzing. It's very hardly through, so we can all speak up a little bit.
Thank you.
I think the volume is down. You're in the thing.
Yes, in and out.
Does that do it? No, it's still buzzing. Still buzzing.
Check. Two, one, two. Check. Still on.
Does this help with it? No.
Is that better? Sorry.
No, it's still, you're still here. I can hear it when you talk. I can hear it.
That it?
Go away. Nope. It's still there.
Yeah, there's some feedback. Sorry, my eyes aren't going. Okay. Let's hit go on here.
Do we get it? Hold on one second. Councilman Colley's trying to bring it down. I still, you can still hear it.
Still buzzing. Yeah. This is when we talk. Must be feedback from the council.
One, two.
Any better? Is it any better?
Is it better? Better. Okay.
Must be something with that mic.
Thank you, everybody. Okay. The council Agenda Item Number 1. There's that feedback. Council Agenda Item Number 2. Council Agenda Item Number 3.
I spoke to Mr. Mazer about this, that if, if the resolution, or I'm sorry, if the item passes, we spoke about having a public notice go into play 30 days prior to the rate change.
Yes, now...
So I don't know where that plays into, to all of this.
We can, we can process that motion when the item comes up for a vote. Yep. And I do have some motion language that we can read in at that time. Okay.
And I am glad, because it's been a while since there's been rates have changed and the price of cheese, milk, butter, and everything else has went up. You know, cost of living, all of these different rates. And, you know, they've been stuck at that same rate for, what, since 2008? I talked to a few people, a few cab owners and whatnot as well, you know, and I think that would, that would be fair, especially when you're dealing with Uber and you're dealing with Lyft and all of these different ride shares, who are making a bulk of money, and they're still kind of stuck in older, over a decade rate. So I think that that is a fair to kind of get them up to market rate, so they're, you know, relatable to the other cab companies as well. So I think it's a good thing.
They're actually held to a higher standard, actually. If you follow the ordinance, I don't know how well you read through the ordinance, but what they have to do with their cabs, the clothing they have to wear, the condition of the cab and stuff like that, is, you know, it's to a pretty good standard.
Right.
Yeah, including the commercial insurance, which some of the Uber, Lyft don't need to have, but they do. So their expenses are much higher.
I remember a former councilman, Tuma, worked his... He worked really hard on trying to get this one. It was his closing moment of glory.
Okay. Council. Item number 4. Excuse me. Agenda Item Number 5. Agenda Item Number 6.
One quick question, and again, this is going back to item number 5. One thing to put this, you know, I have to schedule a quick part of the...
Declaration, and just for good governance, to make sure that the dates were okay, because we had almost a four-week gap between this meeting and the January 17th meeting. So I had made a recommendation, again, I don't know where that fits in, to amend, of which I did share with my council colleagues ahead of time.
Right. And my office was made aware of a request to make an amendment. We can, we can process that amendment when we get to it.
To the vote?
To the vote.
Okay.
Just as a preview, if you will, the amendment is going to involve crossing off the January 17th date off the calendar for next year, and substituting for January 17th will be regular meetings on January 10th and January 24th. So we get to the agenda item if someone would make that motion.
Okay.
Agenda Item Number 6. Agenda Item Number 7. Agenda Item Number 8.
And we're at Agenda Item Number 10. This year, it's simply, we kind of lost our way. On what our jobs, boundaries, and our oath was that we took is that... The chairman here is nothing more than the person that runs the meeting. As you say many times, you're 20% of the vote. You're 1/5 of the vote. The chairman is 1/5 of the vote. He cannot unilaterally make decisions like, we're going to extend this contract, or we're going to do this, or you're going to be the chair. This is just simply reaffirming, taking a look at, showing us where it is in the charter, showing what it is, to try and get the council back on track and make sure that whoever is the next chairman understands the concept that you're just one of five. You want to do something, you can't just do it unilaterally. You have to bring it to the group in public, and it has to be voted on. And that's all this is, is reaffirming that we understand that that's what we have to do, because the past four or five months, we've lost that. And it's time to bring back. Even tonight, we found out there's an example of it. We kind of got slapped a few weeks ago by losing a budget meeting completely. We, all the work we did was for naught. So it's like, we got to kind of go to ground zero and start over. And that's what this was about.
Yeah. So if you can, I just want to, I just want to start technically going over this resolution and then zoom that back out as far as why we even need this resolution, why we've had these, these hiccups. Because first of all, if someone reads this, it's misquoting Section 4.36 of the Charter, because it says, the, in the resolution, it says, and if people bear with me, because I just want to get into the details of what's going on. As an administrative officer, looking in the third paragraph, if anyone wants to follow along, "Administrative officer of the city and head of the executive branch of government shall negotiate all." That word "all" carries some weight, but that word "all" is not in Section 4.36 of this charter. That is a misrepresentation of the charter. And that right there, number one, is unacceptable, because if someone reads this, they get the conception that the mayor is going to negotiate all. And I can read you the verbiage of the, of the charter, if you will, from Section 4.3. "He shall negotiate contracts." Not all contracts, not specifically, some contracts. What contracts? It's determined on the nature of the contract itself. So it's not all contracts, number one. Number two, if you go to Section 3.4F of the city charter, where it delineates the first main body, the primary body, which is the city council, it doesn't have, it has no qualifiers whatsoever in the charter. It just says, Section 3.4F of the charter, "To enter into contracts, franchises, and other agreements, including agreements with other units of government, for all lawful purposes." There's no qualifier to what the council can do. There's no, there's no limit in terms of what contracts, what franchises. We, we okay whatever contracts the mayor negotiates, but that comes back to us. So we have, in terms of contracts, franchises, other agreements included. It says, it goes beyond including other agreements. So that's, that's number two of this, of this resolution. And again, it's unfortunate that our contract with the law firm of Jeff Palumbo, that it wasn't negotiated by the mayor, because that was for the city council's council. Had nothing to do with the mayor. That's our council. So then I believe that, that our own council was tainted by other meetings that were not held with this city council. That's number three. As we go through, just, I'm just focusing on this resolution here. Again, the city does not, the city council does not have the authority to negotiate contracts and agreements. Number one, again, to enter into contracts, franchises, and other agreements, including agreements with other units of government for all lawful purposes. So if the, and the charter, let's read what it says about the, again, "He shall negotiate contracts on behalf of the city for subject to ratification by the council." So he can nego, he can negotiate, not all contracts. He can negotiate contracts on behalf of the city. But if, in the absence of him negotiating, if the city council wants to negotiate, and we're going to get to why he even, to why we even had to get to this, to this resolution period, we're going to get there, because I want to take, that's what I want to end up with, and then pass it along to my other colleagues to have another word. Because this issue right here brings in everything together of this past year, my first year as a city council member. And I want to make sure we get this all out there in the open, so that the people, ladies and gents of this, that's listening to my voice right now, understand what's really going on. Let's go through this real quick. Please bear with me, because this is so important. The city council does not have, does not have authority. We control the, we are the legislative body. We are a co-equal and separate branch of government with the mayor, with the judicial system. We, of course, we have the authority to do that. We control the legisla, we are the legislative body. The mayor can negotiate on our behalf, but as a legislative body, if five of us, if the majority of us agree on a legislative direction, then that's the legislative direction of the city. Does anyone understand where I'm coming from? So now, and then, this is another, this is another attack of Chairman Zajak in his absence. I'm just defending him. I'm not just defending Zajak, I'm defending the city council past, present, and future, because this is an institution. So Chairman Zajak was not the only one who engaged in it. And if our, every, I will guarantee you, everyone on his body engaged with discussions with the NFR representative. Not just Zajak. So he didn't do anything unilaterally, unilaterally. And with these negotiations, we're looking at, and with these negotiations are improper under the clear language of Section 3.4 and 4.3, what I just read. Nothing's clear that we can't do this. As a matter of fact, it gives us the authority to do this, but it makes it easier if the mayor would take the leadership and negotiate himself, which he hasn't. We're going to get to why in a minute, but I just want to focus on the resolution. Just want to focus on a resolution. Any further negotiations? Number one, what negotiations? The agreement brought forth said, city of Niagara Falls, "If you allow us to build on this plot of land, parcel zero, if you let us build on this parcel of land, which is a private piece of property, we want to build on it. Don't come up with this eminent domain. We want to build on this property. We will give you that same amount of property plus a cash donation." That, we didn't negotiate that. That was given to the mayor. That's been on the table from, from 2022, well before I was on the council. Just bringing it to the attention. What negotiations? This is an agreement that's becoming us. And again, going to the clear language of the, of the charter, "To enter into contracts, franchises, and other agreements, including agreements with other units of government." So this is an agreement that came to the city council. It came to the mayor. Why didn't he negotiate? We're going to get to that in a minute. But again, what approval? This says, regarding the negotiation and approval of contracts, what negotiations? What approval? What action did we take?
Can I answer that real quick?
We had a deadline that they gave us in their contract of October, I think it was the 9th. I'm not sure. I know it was in October. Chairman Zajak said, "It's okay if we extend it." That right there is a negotiation, and that right there is a negotiation without all of us in public forum agreeing to extend that deadline. That's a negotiation, and that's what it's after. The chairman pushed his boundaries further than he's allowed to do. The chairman runs the meetings. For someone to extend a deadline like that, it's a vote of five. It's a vote of five. It's a three of five vote in public.
So how do we get to...
If I may also, I don't usually interrupt, but in this case, I think I need to clarify something on behalf of Corporation Council. Councilman Colley, I understand your interpretation of 4.46. And I understand you to say that, I'm sorry, 4.36. I understand you to say that because the word "all" is absent, then that means that the mayor can't negotiate all contracts. Do I have that right?
No.
Well, you tell me, what is the importance of the absence of the word "all" from that subdivision 6? It reads, "He or she," referring to the mayor, "shall negotiate contracts, franchises, and other agreements." And I understood you to be homing in on the absence of the word "all." So it does not read, "He or she shall negotiate all contracts." Was that your point?
Not at all.
I'm just saying that he can negotiate, but he's not the sole negotiator.
Let me, let me just call your attention then to paragraph 3.4F, which refers to this city council's authority to enter into contracts. Just like the language that talks about the mayor's ability to negotiate contracts, your clause, Section 3.3F, does not say you have authority to enter into all contracts. The word "all" is also absent from your, your clause that governs your authority to enter into contracts. Would you want this mayor, or a future mayor, to bypass this council and say, "Because the council doesn't enter into all contracts, therefore, I don't need to consult with council and get their, get their vote, or get them to ratify the agreement. I don't need them anymore." Do you see the danger of interpreting this absence of the word "all"? Because if you interpret it that way, it, you create a road path to bypass this council for ratification of contracts.
Not because ratification by the council is inherent to the force, to the, to the section...
But you'll agree with me...
4.6.
You'll agree with me that 3.4F doesn't say that the council, it doesn't explicitly say, "The council enters into all contracts, franchises, and other agreements."
Listen, we have Agenda Item right now that we're, that we've entered into the contract. So he could definitely negotiate contracts. We don't have to negotiate all contracts. So that's easy. That's not the question.
To mirror your language, yes, just like you're saying, the mayor is able to negotiate contracts, just not all contracts. To mirror your language, I can just as easily say then, that yes, this council can enter into contracts, but not all contracts.
Let's just, let's reverse this before we get into the weeds and keep going back and forth.
Well, it's, it's very important because, it's very important because...
It's very important.
Your, your advice, your advice, your legal interpretation, you're not an attorney, your legal interpretation contradicts the advice and position of, of not only the current Corporation Council, but, but generations of Corporation Councils before him. And I believe also that this council retained outside and outside attorney to give them advice. And correct me if I'm wrong, that council also advised you in a very similar fashion. So your, your, your statements to the public tonight contradict the legal advice that you've received from Corporation Council and from outside council, and I can't remain silent while you say that.
Tried to handle this behind the scenes for months. I did not want to bring this up right now, because it's a very detailed issue. I've been trying to get this, this council with our, with all the councils involved for months on months. No one wanted to sit down and discuss this issue. So now we had to bring this up forth. Now, let me just give you, let me give you another example. Let me give you...
Point of origin. What's the point of origin? Point of origin, it's not talking about...
On an Agenda Item. The Agenda Item is on this here. This has got nothing to do with the negotiating of the contracts and stuff like that, that you're going with NFR and such. This is on this resolution. In this resolution... The agenda item is on this here. This has got nothing to do with the negotiating of the contracts and stuff like that, that you're going with NFR and such. This is on this resolution. In this resolution.
Hold on, question, are you, you responding to what it is that he just took? So if he asked him a question, I feel like he should be able to respond to whatever it is that he said.
I made some more questions. We have to develop, we have to develop the thought process. So let's just say, for example, if someone, if, if group A wanted money, there's two ways to get money. You either go to the mayor and he can find money in the budget, or you come to the city council and they put money in the budget. The same way here. If an agreement, it, we, the city was offered in two thousand twenty-one, a company, a city, a, a, a developer came to the city, said, "We want to build, we've built three data centers. We want to build a fourth data center i- in Niagara Falls." As the city, we agreed. Eight months later, we turned around and said, "Now we want to take that land." They said, instead of, instead of taking this land, how about we get, let us build on this land and we will give you money and we'll give you a, another piece of land instead of doing that. That is the agreement that this is referring to. So why didn't this mayor fulfill his role to negotiate that instead? So in that, in that instance, that's an offer, that's an agreement that's been given to the city. So now, instead of, because he's not, he doesn't, he doesn't have the power to negotiate all contracts, but if they wanted to negotiate with us, with the five of us, which that's when we got our own attorney to do that, the, our attorney meets with their attorney and they come back and do that. We, they gave us an agreement, everybody, the council said, we got, we got legal advice, great. I heard the advice from our external council. I heard the advice from our corporation council. I heard that advice from our own council. But I had a question and I wanted to question what their legal advice was, because it's an advice, it's an opinion. I mean, we, we could have an interpretation. I'm okay with that, we can go back and forth. But I wanted to have that before tonight and it never happened. So the, we have an agreement to, to, to one, and we can do tourism and we can do industry at the same time.
Chairman, where's your question?
The question, I answered the question, so come, this is.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think we do need a point of order here. I think we are.
So what is the point of order?
So we are not, this resolution isn't about a contract to be negotiated with NFR, it's about roles and responsibilities.
Right, so.
Not the details of, of the contract. Or, or, I'm sorry, the contract of the offer, which is where now we're getting off track.
But I, but it all comes back to what, how we got here today so that people can understand what is this even about?
Charter requirements.
Comes back to how are we out of bounds in negoti, and, and, and having an agreement negotiating on, with our power that we're, that we're given and, and we.
Because the charter does not give the council the power to negotiate contracts.
We can enter into agreement.
You know what, I, I think your frustration is with the charter and there is a mechanism to amend the charter. And you or future council members can pursue that avenue to amend the charter to, to include language that you would like to see in it. It's much, if I may, if I may, it's much like the debate, the endless debate and upset about members of the public not being able to address the council during a special meeting. Well, that's because the charter doesn't permit it. If there was any sincere interest in changing that, then the council could make a motion or, not a motion, but start the long process of amending the charter. That's the simple solution. So I, I understand your frustration with the charter, but there is, there is a pathway for amending the charter and that has to be followed.
Ladies and gentlemen, my frustration, I don't have any frustration. And it's, and if it, it's not with the charter. It's with, I, I just want to govern and provide good governance and I see our guest is arriving. I have no frustration with the charter. The, the charter, it, it allows us to do what we need to do to establish a legislative agenda. My, my, if there was something, it's, it, it's trying to silence our chairman, number one, and two, trying to handcuff the council to not do its legislative responsibilities. That's.
Legislation is not contracts, they're two different things, okay? You are a legislative body and that means passing resolutions, motions, charter revisions and the like. It doesn't mean negotiate. That's not what legislation's about. That's not what a legislative body does.
Because I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest. I see there has been, they're saying that there are three times that our chairman has negotiated and pretty much bypassed council. And I got a lot to talk about in, in regards to this agenda as well. When? Because it's not, it's not illegal to have a conversation because that's what has been brought to the public. Oh, he spoke to and he's been having conversations and trying to somewhat have like, type, like, like, let's, let's make like some type of arrangement behind closed doors. I haven't seen that because like I said, every last one of us have spoken, I'm quite sure, in some way, shape or form, whether it's here in City Hall or whether we get a call like we get from other people who want to do business in our city, that, you know, we got calls stating what it is that they want to do. And we can take that information, and I'm going to finish, so if you let me finish and then you can respond afterwards. At that point, when we've all had that type of conversation, for one person to get singled out on an agenda item is troubling to me. And no, 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 I'm, I'm not done. When I'm done, you can speak. It's troubling to me solely because of the fact that you're on your way out the door and I feel like it's a, it's a, it's a stand on your way out. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at a legacy. You've been here for eight years, eight years. And I questioned, because I looked at this. I questioned the motive behind this for a few reasons. And this, 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 all this ties in, it ties into this. Because here's the thing is, and I will, I will concur and, and share those same sentiments because guess what we are? My disclaimer, we are legislative branch of government. The mayor and administration is the executive branch of government, right? We are supposed to be, um, we should be an independent council. We should, we should be able to work together. We should be, and guess what? I believe in synergy. I believe we're not going to agree on everything. Guess what? My two years that I've been here, I haven't agreed on a lot of things of my colleagues, but at the end of the day, I still work with them. I don't ta, I don't bypass or circumvent my colleagues. This right here, to me, is somewhat of an unfairness.
Well, you.
I wasn't done, but you can say whatever.
Back in October, ended the contra, the proposal from NFR. At that point in time, I answered in an email saying, what gave you permission to do that? None of you responded, okay? Then again, later, I think it was, he pushed it again through November, December. And then we just got another one saying it's going to be end of January, January twenty-fourth, whatever. By him unilaterally saying, it's okay to push that out, is him bypassing us and you should be appalled that your twenty percent vote was bypassed. And as I explained at the beginning, this is just trying to get us back on track. We have lost our way in a lot of ways here. This is another, David's a great guy. You go out and have a beer with him, well, I don't drink, but I'd go out with David in a heartbeat. Same over with any of you guys here on the council. This is trying to get us back on track. The chairman has to know what his role and boundaries are. He is no different than any of us sitting up here. Where all five of us are equal, the chairman is elected to run the meeting. He's supposed to meet with the mayor and he's supposed to bring back to the council proposals and try and sell them to us if he feels they're a good thing. He's supposed to kind of be the intermediary, though any council member could call and talk to the mayor. That's what this is about. It's not a personal attack. It's in, it's, we've lost our way. You can't just unilaterally extend stuff and say stuff can move forward. You can't do it.
But he didn't, but he, it wasn't David.
That didn't, it was the NFR representative that did it. That wasn't a legislative.
Do it.
Okay, so I, I, I think here's the other thing, because when we're talking about like the unilateral, because I don't want you to contradict yourself because I'll, I'll go into a, a, a few things that you have unilaterally done that bypassed all of us.
Show me one.
I'll show you one. I'll, oh, I'm glad, I'm glad you asked, my friend. You remember you, you drafted up the pay scale and so, this is, since you're here, we have, I have to answer your question. The pay scale for our secretary that we were trying to go for, for to have a council secretary. This is, this is, again, you've drafted up the, the whole pay scale and the hours and you brought it to us and you said, how it's not going to affect our budget, our hundred million dollar budget at all. And we, we said, okay, well, you know, this, that's good because we can, you, we need that. And without talking to any of us, flipping the switch at our amendment budget meeting, you came back at the very end and you said, you know what? Um, I talked to the mayor and he said, we're not gonna, we don't need to do this right now, let's wait six months and he'll move some money around for us or something like that. And we're like, how did that happen? And how are you bringing that to the table? Same way with the last meeting when you had, when we had the, 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 uh, zoning, same situation. Oh, I, I, excuse me, sir. No, but I, no, 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 we're, no, we're talking, excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir, this is, this is, this is council's meeting. I just, I'm, I'm, I want to speak with, with my colleagues.
Mr. Miles, where you're wrong here is, I couldn't change anything. I brought it forward, asked you guys if you thought the pay scale was right. The reason that I changed and was going to vote no against that is simply the fact that I was looking at it to take a tiny amount out of the, give back to the, in the budget. You know, the six-three would have went to six-two. I said, and other people, unbeknownst to me, because I didn't talk to everybody, wanted to take money out of the budget, take services away from the people and I didn't agree with that. So I said, I'm no longer going to vote for that. But no matter which way that went, it was coming in front of the board for a vote. What the chairman did was, didn't come in front of the board for a vote. What I did came to the board. I didn't unilaterally say, this is law, this isn't okay with this. So that does it. As far as the zoning goes, zoning's easy. Eight years we've had a problem. We finally came up with a resolution after speaking with the neighbors and stuff like that, that will move it forward. What we were asking at the last meeting was to take it to the two planning boards, the city and the county, and get their opinions on it. Just get their opinions on it and then it comes back and we can look at it and take their opinions and do it. All we did was just delay what's going to happen. Because nothing goes forward without going to the planning boards in their opinions. They may say it's great, they may say it's terrible, they may say we like it, you change this. We'll say, this is totally preposterous, go back to the drawing board. That's all we were voting on two weeks ago. So again, that's nothing like saying, go ahead and just do this. Because I don't have the authority to do that. It takes three votes to move something like that.
And, and what I, all I'm saying to you is I'm, I'm giving you examples of, because you're.
Wasn't wrong.
No, no, you're demonizing one person saying that he's bypassing all of us.
I'm demonizing the chairman, what his duty is.
Could you, can you, but can you, can you just hear me out? If you're demonizing him for, you're saying, unilaterally bypassing us to move something forward, I'm saying, don't do the same thing yourself. Even, even though, even though, even though, like I said, the, like, when you brought, like, again.
I brought it, it still came in front of the body for a vote where he, you were letting, and I was trying to say, yeah, it's fine, extend it.
Okay, so again, it's, it's troubling because what happens is, it becomes, if, if you're going to talk about just legislation and we're going to talk about governing, talk about governing, but when you begin to place one person in and it's a David Zajak inside of the actual.
Because he's the chairman that did it.
All you have to do is say the chairman or you have to say in the event or the future, so what happens?
All right, and maybe I, it's worded in the wrong way that you guys wouldn't like, but it's the facts that matter. There's nothing in here that's not factual, nothing.
Okay, yeah, we can.
We got Mr. Laster.
We got it. We do, absolutely, here we go. We got it. Absolutely, no, we got it, we got it, we got it, we got it. So what we're going to do is we're going to pause our session right now and we're going to honor Ms. Laster. And we're glad that you made it in, Ms. Laster. And we're going to, I'll turn it over to our.
Can we do this in the middle of a agenda item?
Over review. We can because the House has not yet voted to adopt the agenda. So, uh, things are still fairly loose and we can resume the agenda review after the presentation.
According to, because sometimes it gets a little heated to. Ms. Laster, we, we definitely appreciate your presence tonight and we're going to hand it over into our clerk.
Thank you, good evening, everybody. Relative to honoring Eliza Mae Pagler Laster. And I'd like to read this resolution. We are so honored to be here to honor you and to be in your presence. So it reads, it reads, whereas Eliza Mae Pagler Laster turned one hundred years old on December the seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three. There we go. Whereas she was born in nineteen twenty-three to Robert and Emma Bogan. I'm, excuse me, Ima, Ima Bogan Pagler in Greenville, Alabama. And whereas Mrs. Laster attended public schools in Greenville, where she often played games, including school, while with her white neighbors and learned about racial disparities. And whereas her white friends had more advanced textbooks than her and her siblings, bus transportation was provided for white students while black students had to walk to school. And whereas employment opportunities for African-American women were limited in Greenville. And at fifteen, Eliza began work as a cook in private homes, honing the culinary skills for which she is well-known today. And whereas, on October nineteen forty-four, she married Robert Laster, who was a deacon at Bethany Missionary Baptist Church and was later ordained as a minister. Eliza was a deaconess. Whereas they had six children, James L. Reverend Robert Laster Jr., Ronald Laster Sr., Deborah Laster Wood, Nicole Y. Laster and Roosevelt Laster Sr., her stepson. And whereas Eliza and Robert moved to Niagara Falls from Alabama in nineteen fifty-two on a friend's recommendation that the city offered better opportunities for employment, education and access to the ballot. And whereas finding housing for her young family was a challenge and they eventually settled in the brick homestead in the Highland Avenue area. And whereas Mrs. Laster was the First Lady of Bethany Missionary Baptist and First Lady Amerita, Ameritas of the Mount Erie Missionary Baptist Church and is the eldest and charter member of Mount Erie Baptist Church in Niagara Falls. And whereas Mrs. Laster worked as a cook for the Alps Restaurant, the Royal Chef and the Red Coach Inn. Alps? The Alps? Thank you very much. Whereas she immersed herself in the Niagara Falls community where she was active in religious circles and civic organizations. And whereas she was vice president of the Great Lakes Missionary Society for thirty-eight years and enjoyed working with the various circles as teacher and music director, which allowed her to travel extensively. And whereas Mrs. Laster was active in lay organizations and is the eldest member of the Lions Club that will honor her at their centennial celebration next year. and is the eldest member of the Lions Club that will honor her at their centennial celebration next year. And whereas, she is also, she also still serves on the NOAA Board and AAACP and the Lions Club International and. Whereas, her favorite biblical verse is Matthew sixteen eighteen, sixteen, chapter eighteen verse. On this rock I will build my church and the gates of hell will not prevail. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Niagara Falls, New York and Mayor Robert M. Restaino hereby recognize and honor Eliza May Pagler Laster on this auspicious celebration of her one-hundredth birthday. We are so honored. Thank you so much and we'll have those corrections made in the resolution. So I'll draft the new one, okay? And bring that to you, mother.
First, I wanna thank the Lord. And the city of Niagara Falls, New York, for giving me a chance. To just say I would, thank you. I don't have words really to explain just how you made me feel this weekend. I've been blessed. I thank all of my friends, my relatives and loved ones. And as I said, enabling me to be able to hear you, tell you what you didn't say that, just right, I didn't do that. And, and just, you know, hear my own self, speak a word, have the breath. You know, so many don't, didn't, don't have the chance, or didn't have the chance that I have to know, tonight, to know where I am, to know what I want, tell you what I don't like, that, you know what I mean? You don't have to say it for me, I'll say it. But I'm glad the Lord gave me the strength and the breath to, and know, to know what I am saying. Sure, I was a church, a member of Church of Mount Erie Missionary Baptist Church under the, under the, uh, direction, first of all, of the Reverend J. M. Bradley. Reverend, my dear pastor, who's my pastor at this prayer time, Reverend Richard D. Pastor, Richard D. Hague Jr. And he's, is he here? He's supposed to be here. He wasn't well enough to be with us Sunday, but the Lord kept him, at least to witness this. You know, at least he can say, that was my member, Mrs. Laster, who was a mother of our church. And, you know, and I'm just happy, we've traveled, I've had the chance to travel. I use the word all over the world. If I hadn't been connected with the church as long as I have been. My husband, who was a pastor, not at Beth- not at, uh, Mount Erie, but he was a pastor Buffalo, in Buffalo, New York, and he was a pastor here in the Falls. And I enjoyed it, cause he was, to me, he was really a happy man. He was a lovely person. He was very outspoken, but that was him. And I, uh, say, I grant, give courage to everybody who's able to speak for themselves. And all the time, we may not be right, but we hope you understand what we mean when we don't know exactly how to say it. We didn't have the chance to go to school like you or a lot of you who's standing in my presence tonight. But I'm still here. And y'all pray for me. Say it, what? Reverend, uh, Pastor Allen, who's maybe present here tonight, I don't know whether he is or not. But he, my husband, a lot of you don't know this, but I'm gonna say this. He pastors the church where my husband was the pastor there after I was pastor. Was no more pastor there. But Reverend Pastor Laster called Reverend Allen one morning, told him to come down to the, our house. So he came down, they sit in their living room and they talk. But what Pastor Laster wanted, he knew he was gonna be, wasn't, was not gonna be at Bethany any longer. But he gave Reverend Allen, Pastor Allen, I hope you remember, but I remember it very well. He said, he wanted him to take his place at Bethany. And it was a good off, he told him, but you know, we, we didn't see it that way. And I'm gonna soon hush too. But they said, this was my day. So I'm gonna use part of it. He offered, gave him a chance. He wanted him to take over Bethany, where he was getting, leaving, wouldn't be there another year. Pastor Allen. And so he did, he, no, he said, and we didn't see it, but you know, God knows everything, don't we? And we don't understand what he mean. And he told Reverend Allen, said, this church may become prop- propofa? Propofa, something, I can't say it right now. Propofa, for you, one day. He, he thought Reverend Allen had a young, young family. And, and he figured he, we, we didn't have many small children in our church at that time, but we had enough. We had it, you know, we had children, younger kids. But you know, I, the church grew and we worship together, even to this day. And we always, now we'll forget Beth- Bethany, because that was his. It was, it was, it was, you know, to us, it was good times. So I guess I will never forget it because we started Bethany and, and, uh, we stick with Bethany as much as we can. That's our church, that's what we call it. It's our church. And so, all of you who are, who remembers us, thank you for your kindness. Thank you for all the neighbors, neighbors who were so good to us. And here, they both, my husband and my, 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 my second son, I believe he was started. No, he was pastor about fourteen, fifteen years in Alabama before he came, he, before he was a pastor here. But anyway, the Lord, so I said, he placed, what I'm trying to get you to understand, we didn't know why my husband wanted Reverend Allen to become pastor of Bethany. So, but he had a reason. Reverend Allen had been there and said, we loved him, uh, 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 we love Reverend Allen very much. So before we call name Bethany, the pastor asked us all to pick a name for that church. So we did. You was playing for James Brown, you don't know about this. Anyway, so we, uh, everybody picked a name. And so, I didn't wanna be the first one, but I had, my house lived right beside, it's right beside the church. And every morning I'd be washing dish, dishes and looking out the window. And, uh, I wish that was, I would love for my husband to pastor that church. I looked and kept looking. So every, seemed like every church here, if it wasn't Mount Zion, it was Zion something. Mount Sinai or Mount something. And I said, no, I don't want a name, don't, it's enough of signs and Sinai eyes and that. And, and, and I said, no, I don't want a name at that. But anyway, we picked a name, they picked a name. And so she, you know. So, so I don't do that, so I had to apologize. So I had to pick up the phone, the phone and call Connie, who's the barber now, y'all know Connie. Connie, I, 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 I got the, really, can I borrow your husband for to sit with? She's so, Ms. Laster, I know, I know, yes, you can. I said, okay, I was, I can just holler, call you and come and do this or that now, I got to get permission. So that's the way we, that's the way we carry on now. So we, thank you all. And I wanna thank, appreciate Mary Astana, who's been good friends of ours for a while, down through the years. And, uh, another friend here, especially, I knew him when he was a little boy. He used to, thought he could drive, but I was scared of his driving. He used to go to Mo- Mobile, Alabama, and his father owned one of these brand-new Desotores. What is that, what they call, you know, the, whatever year it was, a Desoto? Fifty-six or seven or something, Desoto. And his father owned one, brand-new, and we drove, drove that to, to Mobile, Alabama. Me, his father and, and Nicole, Nico, and. When I look up and see a lot of things, I, I can see it. Didn't I tell you, y'all say that?
Tell us.
And anyway, I wanna recognize my pastor too. I didn't recognize, uh, uh, Richard D. Hague Jr. Oh dear, oh, well, well, I'm glad to have you here.
Want to take a picture? Mother, we're gonna take a picture?
Thank you.
Okay, I want to have y'all look this way, ready? Right over here, everybody, right here, you got me over here, right here up in the sky, here we go. You want, here we go. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you so much, excuse me. Thank you so much, excuse me. Thank you, everybody, for your patience, we're gonna resume the meeting. Be careful, excuse me, excuse me, sir. We're gonna resume the meeting, we ask that you just move to your seats. Thank you, thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, we're gonna resume the meeting. Bye, mother. Thank you so much, thank you. Got that gavel? Ladies and gentlemen, we're restarting our meeting. A max and everyone in the audience, if you could just please have your seats and bring your voices to zero. Thank you, we need to resume our council meeting for the evening, thank you so much. Okay, thank you so much.
Well, while we are still in the presentation portion of the meeting, there is one other individual citizen entrepreneur with us this evening and, um, we will have a, a resolution for her to vote on towards the end of the meeting. But since she is here, we would like to take this time to acknowledge and recognize her and her advocacy for, um, remembering a very important historical figure for all coffee shops. And you're gonna hear more about that in a moment, uh, as I turn the floor over to our clerk, who's going to read, uh, the resolution. There will be no vote at this time, we can vote on it during the regular agenda.
Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen, if I could have your attention, please? If I can have your attention, please, thank you so much. Resolution, relative to honoring. Resolution relative to honoring Rose Nicot... Denise, did I say that correct? Nicole, thank you. By councilmember Kenny Tompkins, Mayor Robert M. Restino. Whereas in the early 1800s, Rose Nicot was a slave in New Orleans who, under the neo... I'm sorry. Napoleonic law, was allowed to work and keep her wages only on Sundays. She began selling coffee from a pushcart in the vicinity of St. Louis Cathedral after Sunday Mass. Her coffee became so popular that she inspired other enslaved women of color to do likewise. Eventually, Rose and others like her were able to buy their freedom and grow their businesses. And whereas Rose Nicot, after buying her freedom by 1840, continued to develop her business by replacing her pushcart with an indoor stand in the French market, where she became well-known to thousands of customers for her Café Noir and Café En Lot. As late as 1871, her coffee stand was listed in the New Orleans City Directory. And whereas, due to her tenacity and will to be free, she inspired traditional coffee houses in New Orleans, which remain part of the iconic fabric of modern New Orleans. The most famous example is Café du Monde. Thank you. And Denise is going to help me back there. Which serves only coffee and beignets and is located in the same French market where Rose Nicot operated her business. Yet, there is no recognition of her anywhere in New Orleans. There isn't a brick bearing her name, nor a sign or marker near her church where she's got her start in business. And whereas, although Rose Nicot should be remembered as a survivor, a successful businesswoman, and a symbol of perseverance, her life story and the stories of her fellow free women of color are unfortunately not well-known. Like all free women of color, Rose Nicot has a place in history that deserves our recognition and respect. And whereas Niagara Falls is part of a heritage era full of history and stories of how people of color became free. And whereas Rose Nicot's story is finally being told at Black House Beignet at 616 Niagara Street, a woman-owned business operated by Denise... Denise, say your last name for me. Mayia. Who honors the legacy of Rose Nicot and her cafe. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Niagara Falls and Mayor Robert M. Restino hereby recognize and honor Rose Nicot. And be it further resolved that the City of Niagara Falls dedicates November 1st to the honor of all free women of color who, like Rose Nicot, survived the evils of slavery and persevered to become entrepreneurs and role models in their communities. Thank you. And Denise? We'd like to present this to you. If you could just come up to the front, please. Thank you so much.
Time sake and stuff like that. I'm pulling item number eight.
All right, so item, agenda item number eight is withdrawn from the agenda. And, yeah. We're just going to pull it?
It's your resolution. The agenda has not been formally approved by the council yet, so it's withdrawn.
Okay. And we left off at agenda item number 10. Nine, excuse me. Number nine. And that's it? Then agenda item number 10. I think that's it.
The vote is to adopt the agenda that has just been reviewed. And if there can be a motion in a second, and then a vote...
Let me just get there.
Give me just a moment.
Just a moment. That's your turn.
This one.
Here.
Okay, so this one's crossed out.
Mm-hmm.
And now you're going to start right from the top and go through each one.
Got it.
And call the votes. We're jumping ahead of ourselves. And the next item on the agenda before the vote on all the items is receipt and file from the city clerk. City clerk claims for the month of November 2023. There's no vote required on that. Then moving into the items for council action, starting with what is agenda item number two.
Thank you. Approval of change order number five in the contract to AMD Environmental Consultants, Inc. for asbestos monitoring for demolition contract. Councilmember Bax? Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
I have four yeas. This item has been passed. Agenda item number three. Approval of amending chapter 365 of the codified ordinances entitled Taxi Cabs, Taxi Cab Drivers, Liveryes, and Library Drivers.
Hang on a second. Just a moment. You spoke before I had a chance to ask, is there a motion to amend?
Yes, there is a motion to amend.
So the motion to amend, just so that we can be clear. In item three, the supporting records, if you look at that page, it's a one page, it's page two. And it starts out with chapter 365 at the top. And the amendment is going to add a paragraph, add a new paragraph directly below the paragraph that ends with the date, quote, "February 1, 2024," end quote. And it's bold and underlined. So a new paragraph will be inserted directly below, "February 1, 2024." And the motion to amend is to add a paragraph that reads, quote, "Subsequent to the City Council's approval of any change in the rates of fare pursuant to this chapter, the city clerk shall ensure that notice of said rate change shall be published in the city's official newspaper at least two times weekly during the 30-day period immediately preceding the effective date of the said rate change." Period, end quote. I have a handout so that each of you can see that language that I just read. I'll distribute that. And I believe, is it Councilman Bax that is making the motion to amend?
Motion, yes, and that is correct. We're going to vote to amend. Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been amended.
Is there a motion to approve the amended resolution?
Councilmember Bax? Councilmember McCollie?
Yes.
Colley? Excuse me. Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been passed. Agenda item number four. Approval to settle and pay the personal injury lawsuit of Samuel McCullough in the amount of $15,000. Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been passed. Excuse me, can I have quiet in the audience? Thank you. Agenda item number five, relative to the 2024 City Council meeting schedule.
The January dates?
Thank you, Councilman Bax. And I have the proposed amendment. Just to be clear, if you're looking at the item five handout, one page, it reads at the top, "Resolution Number 2023." And then if you just turn to the lower quarter of the page, where it reads, "January 1, Organizational Meeting," the amendment would strike out the reference to January 17. And in its place, directly above January 17, would insert January 10. And directly below the struck-out January 17, it will insert January 24. I have a handout that shows the amended language that I've just read, and that will be distributed to the council members. Councilman Bax has made the motion to amend. Is there a second?
Councilmember Bax? Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes. He got the name.
Four yeas. This agenda item has been amended. Thank you. All right, so we need to vote. Thank you.
I second it? I will second it.
You move your second?
Yes.
Can I follow up?
Follow up.
Thank you. Councilmember Bax? Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been approved. Agenda item number six. Relative to the standard workday and reporting resolution by Councilmember Tompkins. Councilmember Bax?
Wait, what item number?
Number six.
Okay. Yes.
Thank you.
I thought you said eight.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this agenda item has been passed. Agenda item number seven. Relative to honoring Rose Nicot by councilmembers Tompkins, Mayor Robert M. Restino. Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been passed. Agenda item number nine. Relative to honoring Congressman Brian Higgins by Councilmember Tompkins and Mayor Robert M. Restino. Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been passed. They added the agenda item number 10, and that was the resolution relative to honoring Eliza May Pegler Laster. Councilmember Bax?
Yes.
Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, this item has been passed.
Thing, the agenda, just want to be clear. Did we, we did the motion, then we moved it? Did we need to take a vote to adopt the agenda, or no? Just want to clarify that. Because we never took the vote to adopt it.
Yes, we did.
You motioned in second, but we never went through to vote on adopting the agenda.
If that's the case, then I have a different memory, but I'm not 100% sure. We can err on the side of caution by... Motion to adopt the agenda. Who made the motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
And Councilman Bax seconded it.
Councilmember Bax? Councilmember Colley?
Yes.
Councilmember Miles?
Yes.
Councilmember Tompkins?
Yes.
Four yeas, the agenda, this item has been passed. Yes, we do. Okay. So our first speaker is Ronald Cunningham.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Ronald Cunningham. Born in Washington, DC, but I hail from the great state of New York. Before that, I lived at 1616 15th Street in the city of Niagara Falls, known as the king of power, queen of beauty, and the honeymoon capital of the world. That's where we're at right now. Thank you for having the good sense to honor two ladies this evening. I thought that was very great of the council. I'd like to congratulate you for your good sense and logic to do such a thing. And in December of 17, 1923, a princess was born by the name Eliza Pegler. She's here and there, miss, today. And in December, on October 7, 1944, she became a queen because she married Robert Laster, Sr. That's when she became the queen. And she's been an inspiration to the total community. I mean, she dresses nice, as you can see. I picked up some of my cues from her. She looks very nice. Real hip-looking lady. And I think that you guys honor her and other lady tonight was good. You rarely get congratulated on what you do. But you always get known for what you didn't do or what you messed up with. But you're doing a great job. I just want to say that thank you for honoring such a great lady, her son. She raised six great kids. One of her sons played with James Brown. One of her sons played with James Brown. If you know who James Brown is, raise your hand. Who knows James Brown? Well, all right then, her son played in that band. And you know our great icon, James Brown met his demise, and we still hear his music. He's a great guy. So I just want to thank you for doing that. And that's all I have to say, that's all I got. But jeez, thank you. And you guys in Leket up there, I want you to know, it's a thankless job, but you do it well. You got thick skin, and that's what you need, and you represent the city well. And you're watching our budget, we have a five million dollar surplus, which as a taxpayer, I'm happy to know. So I just like to congratulate you and the great lawyers you have to keep things moving right and fast. So thank you for your time, thankful for all you do. God bless you. And this is one before, Mrs. Eliza Pegler-Laster, it's a blessing to have you and I missed.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Diane Tattersall.
Thank you, council. My name is Diane Tattersall, and I reside in the fourteen-hundred block of Ford Avenue. First of all, I'd like to thank you, Mr. Tompkins, for your past years of service, and we wish you well in all you do. Thank you. I'm optimistic about your future as a council. I supported and voted for Mr. Perry and Mr. Archie, not because of Republican or Democrat affiliation, but because of their temperament and their maturity. My hope is the next four years' meetings will be conducted, excuse me, will be conducted more professionally. Speaker must stay on point and be respectful. Also, I'm not sure if you're aware, when speakers are done speaking, some return to their seats and make a racket. Others sitting nearby would like to hear the rest of the meeting. A quick whisper to who you're sitting with is one thing, but disruptive behavior should be addressed. I have no onsite parking. For me to come out at 6:00 PM to a council meeting means I'll probably have to park a block away from my house and walk when I get home. So instead, I'm choosing to stay informed with regard to the agenda, and I'll find a way to share my thoughts with the council before your Wednesday meetings. Don't assume because some of us are not in attendance or get to be on camera that we don't care. We do. I do not need to be schooled on how to be a good Niagaraan. We need to address basic property cleanliness by all property owners. Sal Magley, the market, new street lighting, it's all great. But when Niagara Falls enforces rules, we're all expected to follow and cleans up these neighborhoods. Everything else will blossom. It's the broken windows theory. Thank you, and Merry Christmas. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Our next speaker is Gerald Scherlin.
Good evening, I am Gerald Scherlin. I have to mention specifically of the Lavinia Porter House Historic Register Parsonage in Niagara Falls. I'm going to read this. General Municipal Law Ninety-Six A, Protection of Historic Places, Buildings, and Works of Art. To provide by regulation special conditions and restrictions for the protection, enhancement, perpetuation, and use of places, district sites, buildings, structures, works of art, and other objects having a special character or special historical or aesthetic interest or value. The Lavinia Porter House is a slave brick house by Augustus Porter. Harry Woods wasn't considered a slave at that time, but what else was he? Such regulations, special conditions, and restrictions may include appropriate and reasonable control of the use or appearance of neighboring private property within public view or both. I mentioned the time before I came here last time, that Marani Holdings put storage containers full of hotel development products inside of them all around my house. You cannot basically see the house. Eight containers on one-seventy Buffalo Avenue, four containers on one-fifty-four Buffalo Avenue. These are private residences containing commercial goods. What is this doing but destroying our property value, destroying our life? It's like it's worse than COVID. It's like, I don't know, being in jail, you can't look out your windows, you only see a container. Now, according to this General Municipal Law Ninety-Six A, and looking further into these laws, there is a certificate of appropriateness that I believe should have been signed, but I ask for FOIL, and all I get is FOIR. Yeah? I don't get my, I don't get foils. I ask for them, twenty days goes by, thirty days goes by, it doesn't matter, thirty days a year. And why? Because perhaps every foil that we request, they maintain it there, and they go through it, nitpicking every other subject that is close to it, that we might find a point to prove that we are being discriminated and prosecuted maliciously by those corporate hotel owners who are putting this blight around our property. Go take a look. It's there. It's been there six months. How long would you put up with it if one day to the next, without, with you knowing nothing about it, somebody comes along and he puts eight containers right next to your house? And there you go. All the flower displays, I said to myself on the internet to people, I said, look at the beautiful flowers that we have, historic flowers, you know? We're going back to eighteen forty-seven. I said, who can fight against flowers? Well, now I know, because what are those, when they finally remove the containers, what's the ground gonna look like? It's gonna be hard. The flowers, they're all gone. I know who can fight against flowers. Marani Holdings can. And they still refuse to talk about the dangerous trees next to my house. The one came down, almost killed my son, two thousand eight. They refuse to speak about taking care of that deadly situation. This is four.
Our next speaker is Reverend Raymond Allen.
Colleagues that you work with, certainly here tonight on behalf of Eliza Laster, what a blessing to hear what she said tonight. Taken me back quite a ways to the conversation with her husband. I count it an honor to follow his leadership in pastoring Bethany for the last seventeen years. So Sister Laster, I want to say to you before I take my seat, let me get around here. It's a blessing to be your age. My grandmother lived to be ninety-nine years old and was getting ready to celebrate her one-hundredth birthday, but she passed away before we could do that. At a hundred years old, it's a blessing to sleep in your own bed, to sit in your own chair, to be in your own house. In the words of Billie Holiday, mama may have, papa may have, but God bless the child that got his own. God bless you, and it's a privilege to be able to follow your husband's leadership. Thank you, God bless you.
And the last speaker for this evening, I have Janine Gallo.
My name is Janine Gallo. I reside at two forty-five Irving Terrace in the town of Tonawanda. I'm here in regards of Niagara County, the shelter that they have moved to two forty-eight Grand Island Boulevard in Grand Island, New York. I just, I don't run out of time. For the taxpayers, you're paying twenty-two thousand dollars a month to shelters, dogs in a storefront. Okay, in a storefront. No runs. I have sheets for anybody. The first thing you have to do to run a shelter is seal the floors for any contamination that can spread to humans just by you walking by the plaza and so forth. There's so many things. I don't know how a board or any, a mayor could issue a twenty-two thousand dollar check a month and never go and see what's going on. And just to further it, before I read what I have to read, she's on a month-to-month lease. She's basing the twenty-two thousand dollars as if the dogs were staying at the Niagara SBCA, which is a full staff with doctors, techs, everything. If you have a dog at two o'clock in the morning that maybe the dog warden picks up, he brings that dog. She runs a shelter. She runs a training facility. She has dogs from the city of Tonawanda in there. And just perhaps your little dog got out at two o'clock in the afternoon and was taken from the dog warden to that shelter and put in there for even an hour. When you got your dog back, your dog is now could have any disease in the world. There's no place to single out where the dog would be quarantined until you knew the dog was safe to be around humans or other dogs. I just want to stress, twenty-two thousand dollars a month you're paying, and you paid a hundred and five thousand dollars to give her fifty-two kennels, which it's a storefront of, I think, a thousand square feet that she just got. She didn't even have it when you issued her a check. She goes on, you could look the pit chick. She's under the pit chick, she's under rescue buffalo. You could go back on her Facebook, and you could see she's begging for money constantly. Hello, give me money. She's intertwining her shelter with Niagara Falls, and who knows where this money's going? Where is the money she's collecting for the animals? The dog warden came to Niagara, or Grand Island Board Meeting the other night, in uniform, representing Niagara Falls in Grand Island, and saying, there's nothing wrong, because she has a piece of paper that says it passes. The piece of paper, because nobody has the knowledge of it, is something you get to get a five oh one three C. It's just a piece of paper. Nobody went out there. I think Vincent, I think you did. Thank you. I think you did. I don't know how to say your last name, that's why I called you Vincent. And that's it. You have to have drainage, you have to have, she's not even a vet tech. She has no experience to run a facility. She has people in there, maybe. She has the windows black. If anybody would like to go, the address is twenty-four eighty-eight Grand Island Boulevard. There's nowhere for the dogs to be, other if they get out, they'll be on the road. There's no walks, there's no nothing. Just picture a plaza, a four-store plaza, and she has, she went on record in Grand Island, she only has fifteen dogs total in there. There's almost thirty dogs in there. And like I said, she got an eviction notice to be out by February first, so I'd like to know where Niagara Falls is in this picture of twenty-two thousand dollars a month to some girl that came in here, the pit chick, and says, I'll do it, and here's your bill. So, the location I gave you, it's a busy, it's careful, okay, her lease is month-to-month, I went through that. Her ultimate to vacate the building by February first, if she doesn't sign a five-year lease, and the landlord of the building gave her a list of things that she's supposed to have that Niagara Falls should have made sure she had before she did this. So this list of things she has to do, my question is, at twenty-two thousand dollars a month, where is she gonna put the dogs, why she does the list of things? And will she sign a five-year lease? I, when this was approached to me by her, I offered to buy her a one-point-four-million-dollar building.
Janine?
Yes.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Thank you so very much.
Okay, thank you. I did pretty good, though, didn't I?
You did great. We have no additional speakers for this evening.
Shout of love to Ms. Laster. Once again, thank you again for your presence, for anyone to have experienced that amount of time on earth and has gone through all of the things that we have gone through on, in the United States, as a Black woman, the struggles that we have, you know, as a culture as well. And to still wear it very elegantly and still wear it with class and poise, that is, that is something to be just, you know, that's remarkable. So thank you again for your presence. Thank you, Nicole, for guiding your mom here and for taking care of her as the way you do, and it's a beautiful thing, so we thank you. Also like to wave at Mr. Tuma in the back, our former city councilman. How you doing, sir? Is there anything that anyone?
Just obviously the same thing, nineteen twenty-three, you can imagine how the world was, how the society was, into two thousand twenty-three, incredible and still sharp, still can sing. I was at the birthday, she still can sing, she still, God, it was great. Obviously, thanks to Tuma as well, and thanks to the speaker that came up. Thanks to all the speakers that come up and talk. It's not, it's not easy coming up to speak and voicing your opinion, so we appreciate it. Thank you, and Merry Christmas.
We're definitely And we don't want anyone to get a misconception, because the true story is, is that we don't necessarily always agree on everything up here. And it's not a personal, what happens is, is that, but there is a synergy sometimes. And sometimes the synergy is something that could actually build something better for our city. So if we're not all, you know, agreeing and walking on the same page, that doesn't necessarily mean that that's a horrible thing for our city. It just allows us to see things in different ways, from different eyes and different viewpoints, and not in our own parochial state of mind and through a narrow tube.
And thanks to Kip Tompkins for eight years.
Eight years of service. Do I have something you want to say, sir?
Yeah, I do. I just want to say thank you for being allowed to serve this great city. I've had the pleasure of working with twelve different council people. Some, like Frank Soda, John Spanbar, and even Andy Tuma, had similar styles and made life easier by sharing thoughts and ideas. I learn from them. Try and learn from your brethren, because it is important. Anyone that runs for office and puts their personal life on hold, I give kudos to. It's not easy nor fun. Hopefully, they are doing it for the right reasons. I believe almost all do. Some decisions we are asked to make are easy, some not so much. But with research and getting questions answered, you can come to a decision that you believe is the best for the city, half will like it, half will not. But hopefully, you do, and you did your best. I love being out there in the community and have met so many people. Some will be friends for life, some probably not, but that's possible. I walk away after eight years with no regrets and happy to see the city starting its slow upward climb. It took years to go down, it will take years to go back up. But three strong budgets and exciting projects in our future, I see positive changes coming. But three strong budgets and exciting projects in our future, I see positive changes coming. In closing, alls I ask is, don't believe all you hear on social media and podcasts. Get involved, call your elected and ask questions. Diane's a firm example of that. We all have heard from Diane many times, many times. Give your opinion, tell them why you feel the way you do. Help a neighbor, cut the grass on the empty house next door to help neighbor her blight. Pick up some trash blowing in the street or alley. This is our city. Putting forth positive energy and working together will help move us forward faster. Happy holidays to all, and good luck to our new council.
I have a plaque for Kenny for his eight years. So the plaque reads, "Thank you for your dedication and devotion to our city, serving on the city council, your colleagues on the council, and the city of Niagara Falls. Thank you for your hard work and commitment."
Thank you, guys.
No further. The meeting is adjourned.